Good evening. I would like to call to order, uh, City Council Committee of the whole meeting for October sixth, twenty twenty-five, the time is seven P. M. Please join me in, uh, with, for the pledge of allegiance, and if you would, please stand. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is a committee of the whole meeting, and attendance is not required. However, uh, five of, or five of us are here, and, uh, the two, uh, Mr. Wallensack, uh, called me to let me know he wasn't gonna be here tonight, and Mrs. Ackerman did the same thing, so we don't have to ask to be, for them to be excused, but they, uh, both had, uh, called to ask to be excused from the meeting tonight. Um, also joining us this evening is Mayor Michael Seferian, uh, City Admins, Administrator Joe Mezier, our Clerk of Counsel, Josette Snyder, Public Service Director Paul Roman, Chief of, uh, we, none of the chiefs of police are here, uh, tonight, uh, Fire Chief Clayton O'Brien, Assistant Fire Chief Mark Mullins, um, Finance Director Nick Roman, and IT Director Ken Meister. Um, first order of, of business for this evening is persons of delegations. We have one person that has signed in, um, Mr. Eller Bush, uh, if you would, please, uh, name and, um, address for the record, please. And if you need to, you can adjust the mic. We sorta got it worked out.
You let me know if we need to adjust.
I'm sorry?
You let me know if I need to adjust.
Yeah.
Jim Eller Bush, thirty-nine Cedarwood Drive. Thank you, Council President. With your approval, I'd like to ask three questions, and then council or administration respond.
Absolutely.
Thank you. My first question is, can we describe where the new approved four hundred and seventy, or fourteen hundred and seventy-five megawatt power plant will be built in relationship to the data center? Question two, will the power plant be dedicated to the data center, or will it feed the grid? And question three, if the data center is not successful, will the zoning allow for, like warehouses with a hundred overhead or, or loading docks, uh, rail spurs, intermodal, uh, containers? Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Mezier, do you wanna handle that? Sure, yeah. Um, thank you, Mr. President, and thank you, Mr. Eller Bush. Uh, the fourteen hundred and seventy-five megawatt power plant that you referred to is the, um, second power plant, natural gas power plant, that is planned for the industrial park. Uh, that is planned for Parkway Drive, uh, north, on the north side, and then that's also on the south side of the railroad tracks, so, um, on the south side of the tracks from the already existing eight hundred and fifty megawatt plant. Uh, I hope that answers question number one. Uh, question number two, will the new power plant feed into a data center, uh, for the adjac, that's planned for the adjacent site? Um, that power plant is an independent project on its own. It's a standalone, uh, it, it's meant to feed into the grid because there is a, a, a need for more power in the PJM, uh, region. So the re, regionally, there's a need for more power, so that fourteen hundred and seventy-five megawatts, um, would feed into the grid. It is an independent project. Um, now, could the end users of both sites, uh, come up with a power purchase agreement at some point? They could, uh, but right now they're independent projects of each other. So, um, and your third question, I, was it, you said it was zone, was it zoned? The zoning of the which site? The, the power plant site or the?
One of the data centers that proposed.
Yes.
If we're not successful, would the data center, would a warehouse with a hundred overhead doors and rail spurs and intermodal containers be acceptable in that zone?
Yes. Uh, so to answer that question, uh, the, the, um, will the zoning allow for warehousing? Yes. Um, that is a, a, a use that, that could be, uh, on that property, and, and yet there's no limit on, on traffic count. It's just, um, for advanced manufacturing because half of the site is already zoned industrial. The other half of the site is zoned as advanced manufacturing. Warehousing is an acceptable, acceptable use for both designations.
So that could be our option to the data center?
Correct. Could be.
It feel a hundred fifty, two hundred semi, if that's what they need?
It could. It could.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Offset, Mr. Eller Bush?
Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, I'd like to add, just that, as, as, uh, Joe Mezier said, uh, some of that property is advanced manufacturing. Some of it is M-two, heavy industrial, so that allows for just about any possibility, and, uh, so that is approximately, what would you say?
CI.
Half of, yeah, so half of it would, would allow for virtually any industry.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Um, the first item on the agenda for discussion is item one sixty-one of twenty twenty-five, being presented by Mayor Seferian and our Fire Chief, uh, Clayton O'Brien. Chief O'Brien.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. This ordinance would allow us to accept the SAFER grant. Uh, as you recall, earlier this year, we did put an application in for the SAFER grant, but in order to accept it, I would need the, uh, council's approval. And what this grant is, we were awarded, uh, two point three seven five, uh, million, well, two million three hundred and seventy-five thousand, one hundred and nine dollars and eighty-three cents, and that will fund nine firefighters over the next three years. Uh, this grant does, uh, include a match, so as it's indicated here, the first year would be twenty-five percent match, the second year would be twenty-five percent match, and the third year, we would, as a city, have a sixty-five percent match. Those numbers for those matches is, in the first year, it would be three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and sixty dollars and eighty cents, and that would be for year one and for year two. It'd be the identical match. And then in year three, it would be the match on the city side would be eight thou, eight hundred and thirty-four thousand, four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and five cents. So again, this ordinance would allow us to be able to accept this grant, and we have a thirty-day window that we have to, uh, to be able to accept it in, so we would fall within that window if we had the approval, uh, next week.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. President.
Um, Mr. Mayor.
Uh, Chief, could you tell them what, uh, year four would be?
Yes, uh, Mr. President, uh, Mr. Mayor, year four would be a, um, would be a zero match on the federal side, and we would have the full amount on the city side.
Which is?
And which is the total of, uh, one million, four hundred and seventy-six thousand, four hundred and nineteen, sixty-five cents.
Thank you. Mayor, anything else?
Yeah, because that is, uh, very essential, numbers, because, um, when we chose to apply for the SAFER grant, we had to know that we would have additional funding to, um, to pay our offset cost, and ultimately the nearly one point five million dollars in year four. And so at that time, there was several options, uh, discussed, and those would be, we would either have to cut some other city services to, um, come up with that money at that time, or, uh, another proposal would be to add a quarter percent payroll income tax to cover that, uh, additional cost, or, um, op, option three would be to pursue new revenues, which, um, I was directed by council to say that what, well, you, we got industrial ventures in our industrial area that we believed, or they believed that the new incoming revenue, uh, would be able to cover that cost, and we wouldn't have to, uh, pursue a two, or a quarter percent payroll income tax. We wouldn't have to cut city services, so that's why we applied for that grant, knowing that we had support to our industrial area to provide for additional revenue. So, so before we can go forward with accepting this money, we do have to know that we have the commitment to still seek, um, our industrial, uh, new money. Otherwise, we're gonna have to turn this out. Mr. Mezier, you wanna add anything to that?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mezier.
Thank you for that. Um, yeah, and just to echo what the mayor described is that, uh, you know, this is, uh, it is essential to find a new revenue source to sustain this in the long term. Um, that's, that's must happen. So, uh, in order to do that, you, we do have to find, uh, additional revenue sources. Um, you know, right now, we've got one on the table with a data center. Um, this provides, uh, what's needed to fund, uh, long-term, uh, additional firefighters and more. Um, you know, that's, that's what our, uh, the goal is here, is that we're, we're finding a new revenue source from, uh, very key and very important, uh, industrial opportunity, and, uh, we're, we're, you know, rounding third, heading to home, to use a baseball analogy, uh, on this, on this, uh, data center project. So, um, you know, hopefully we, we can, you know, get to the finish line, see this through, um, and then sustain, uh, the funding needed for our safety, safety services. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief, anything else to add, or?
Um, Mr. President, just one more thing to add. I just wanna just, uh, just have a reminder out there that, uh, currently, on average, our, our fire engine arrives with two point five individuals, and the way that these safe, the SAFER grant is wrote upon is the NFPA seventeen-ten standards. And the NFPA seventeen-ten standards, what our goal is here is to arrive on scene with ten firefighters in less than ten minutes. And as we looked at all the data back in twenty twenty-four, that data comes back that we had only arrived on scene, uh, five percent of the time, we only met that standard. Uh, whereas with the SAFER grant, we will be able to meet that seventeen-ten standard eighty to ninety percent of the time. So this is a drastic, uh, increase in services to our community and, uh, desperately needed by our department in order to continue the services that we provide. And again, the SAFER grant provides for the ability to handle two to three overlapping EMS calls, which we do see overlapping calls in our department at sixty-three percent of the time, so a third of our runs are overlapping, but also has the first complement to a structured fire, which that would be a medic, an engine, a truck, and a battalion chief. And that will help us fulfill that first complement to the structured fire, again, back to those national standards that, of best practices is what we're trying to meet. And additionally, the last thing I would say is that this does have an impact on our ISO rating. Uh, in, in ISO, we were only received four point three two points out of a total of ten for the, the amount of individuals that we had on staff to be able to respond to these structured fires. And as we looked at all those data, the additional of not only just the deployment analysis, but the company personnel, where we only had, uh, the ability to, uh, receive six point three two points out of a total of fifteen. So I do see that, that ISO rating would be, uh, would be drastically helped with this staff as well. And that ISO, if we, just as a, as a reminder, ISO, uh, assist, what our rating is, plays a factor in everybody's insurance ratings within our community. So, uh, but if I, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Uh, thank you. Chief, I do have one thing, and I don't, shouldn't jump in front of everybody, but if I don't, I'll probably forget when they're talking. This is personnel only, correct, with the SAFER grant?
Mr. President, that is correct. This is personnel only. It'd be for the funding of nine firefighters.
Thank you very much. Counsel, any questions for Chief?
Hearing none.
Wait a minute, Mr. President. I do, I do have some, another couple points I'd like to make. Um, if we were to, um, accept the SAFER grant, and then not have the funding, and have to, um, lay off those nine firefighters, uh, I, Mr. Roman probably is, is the one who has dealt in our city the most with, um, applying for grants. Um, what kind of position can you tell them what puts the city in when we are not able to follow through with our end of the commitment?
Um, Mr. President, um, typically, when ISO, in a, for a grant application, you get it, if the city turns it down, you don't have much credibility next time you apply for a grant, number one. So it is a tough decision, uh, 'cause here you are with this decision. I don't believe there's anything in there that says, obviously, you don't wanna hire somebody and lay them off. I don't think there's anything that says you have to give that money back. And a lot of the federal grants, if you don't do the improvement or, you know, a lot of times, you may be forced to give that money back. I don't think that's the case here, but that is the, the option you don't wanna end up with is having to lay somebody off because you can't find, you know, the funding any other way. I think in finding this revenue, if you guys accept this, you gotta start looking right now for that revenue. I mean, it's not like year four. We're talking maybe year one, year two, but you should be on your way to knowing what that revenue is by year three. You're still looking at eight hundred. And my biggest concern is public service. We share that general fund with, with police and fire. So if you don't come up with that other revenue, what are you gonna cut? You're gonna, I mean, I, you know, I, I don't, you don't wanna be like fear mongering, but I'm gonna tell you, if you don't have revenue to pay for these nine firefighters, you're gonna either have to lay them off or find the revenue by cutting something else. So that, this is a big decision. To, to make this, to approve this is a big deal. That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Counsel, any questions?
Hearing none. Uh, I will seek a motion to move item one sixty-one of twenty twenty-five to next week's agenda.
Mr. President.
Mrs. Polliff.
Um, so moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Polliff.
Second.
Second by Mr. Horniac. Uh, to move item one sixty-one of twenty twi, twenty-five to next week's agenda. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none. Item one sixty-one of twenty twenty-five is moved to next week's agenda. The next item on the agenda for discussion is item one sixty-two of twenty twenty-five, uh, being presented by Mayor Seferian and one of our police chiefs, but the chiefs aren't here, and I believe Mr. Mezier's going to speak on it. Mr. Mezier.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, this is annual legislation. Um, this would authorize the city to enter into an agreement, or re-enter into an agreement with the CJCC, the Criminal Justice Coordinating Council, uh, that runs our NORA system, the Northwest Ohio, uh, Information System. Um, this is an area-wide, uh, system that's used for criminal justice and, and law enforcement. Um, it's an integrated system regionally, uh, where our officers have access, uh, to, you know, sensitive information and information they need to, uh, you know, for law enforcement purposes. Um, so, uh, we run our LEED system off of this, and, um, you know, basically, LEED is the, uh, law enforcement automated data system, uh, that they use to, uh, help them, uh, you know, when they're, uh, pursuing criminals and, and, uh, you know, detectives are using it to help solve crimes. So, um, this is, uh, yeah, like I said, annual legislation. Uh, if you look in the, uh, contract, it's, uh, an annual cost, uh, to us of thirty-six thousand, one hundred and eighty-eight dollars for, uh, the year of twenty twenty-six. So it's calendar to year to calendar year. Um, that's the basic, uh, information that I have for this, uh, ordinance, and I'll take any questions. Uh, no, no, um, emergency is needed either since this is, uh, beginning of the year to the end of the year, so, uh, we're a little early on this, but, uh, the chief apologizes for not being able to make it. Um, he did have, uh, a couple of things that actually came up, uh, so he wasn't able to present this today. So, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Mezier. Uh, counsel, any questions?
Hearing none. I will, uh, seek a motion to move item one sixty-two of twenty twenty-five to next week's agenda.
Mr. President?
Yes, Mrs. Polliff?
So moved.
Thank you, Mrs. Polliff. Second by Mr. Horniac. Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Uh, to move item one sixty-two to next week's agenda. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none. Item one sixty-two of twenty twenty-five is moved to next week's agenda. The next item on the agenda for discussion is item one sixty-three of twenty twenty-five, being presented by Mayor Seferian and our IT Director Ken Meister. Mr. Meister.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is a contract that basically is a general renewal of our internet services, our phone services, and the point-to-point connections that we have with all the other outside, buildings outside of this complex. Um, it's a three-year term, um, nothing too, too crazy with it. We'll be doubling the speeds through all the buildings, um, and dropping a couple of them off as far as, uh, things that aren't needed. If you have any questions, please let me know.
Thank you, Mr. Meister. Counsel, any questions?
Mr. President.
Uh, was that Mr. Salander?
Yes.
Mr. Salander.
Uh, just a question, I guess, well, for whoever can answer. Um, on this, uh, is, is Buckeye our only option, or was, do we get other pricings on that, or?
I did get a pri, sorry, sorry, sorry.
You're fine.
Um, I did get a price from AT&T. They were higher, and it would require a build-out that would have been pretty lengthy. Um, in general, I, I've found that Telus system usually has pretty good service.
Okay.
As well as, uh, service, not in the sense of the actual service, but also just support.
Right. Understood, yeah. Okay. All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Salander. Um, counsel, any further questions? Hearing none. Um, I will seek motion to move item one sixty-three of twenty twenty-five to next week's agenda.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Drake.
Second.
Thank you, Mrs. Polliff. To move item one sixty-three of twenty twenty-five to next week's agenda. Counsel, are there any objections? Hearing none. Uh, item one sixty-three is moved to next week's agenda. Our next item on the agenda for discussion is item one sixty-four of twenty twenty-five, and it's being presented by Mayor Seferian and our Finance Director Nick Roman. Mr. Roman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this item is needed to renew our, uh, contract with Delta Dental for, and employees' dental insurance benefits for your plan year twenty-six. Uh, there's zero percent increase. Um, we have been with Delta Dental since two thousand and two, um, and our employees seem to like it and have had, not had many issues with it. Um, if there's any questions, please let me know.
Counsel, any questions or concerns? Mr. Roman, you wanted to go, would you wanna go over one sixty-three as we're, while we're here? Or one sixty-five?
Um, yeah, if you don't mind, Mr. President. Yeah, so one sixty-five is to renew our liability coverage through, uh, the Ohio Plan, as well as our cyber coverage, which would actually be a new, uh, group that we'd be going through. It'd be Great American Fidelity Insurance Company. Um, we've been with the Ohio Plan, uh, since two thousand and four as well, um, and we've had a great relationship with them. Um, the one big issue with going out to bid on our liability insurance is that, that, uh, loss that we had, uh, from that cyber issue, uh, back four years ago is still on our loss ratio, which basically takes how much you've lost over the last four years. Uh, so we have a very high loss ratio when you look back, um, on our plan. Uh, so it makes it hard to go out to bid. You're not gonna get many, uh, bidders on it, and we've been with the Ohio Plan for, uh, like I said, since two thousand and four. We work well with them. Uh, the plan is to go out to bid next year, and hopefully we can get some of these costs down because that, uh, one claim will fall off, uh, for next year. So, uh, if there's any questions on that, you can let me know.
Counsel, any questions or concerns? Mr. Roman, if you'd like to go to one sixty-six?
And, uh, this last one is for our life insurance plan. Uh, we give all of our employees a fifty thousand dollar life insurance plan. They have the option to add, uh, additional amounts, uh, at their own cost. Um, we've been with them for quite a while as well. I believe that one is around the same time. I believe that one is around the same time, 2002. Uh, this would be a two-year agreement at no increased cost, zero percent increase. We've been at the same rate since 2002.
Thank you. Counsel, any questions or concerns? Hearing none. Um, I will seek, uh, a motion to move item 164, 165, and 166 to next week's, uh, regular council meeting.
Mr. President.
Mr. Horniac. So moved. Thank you, Mr. Horniac.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Pauloff. Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff. And those are to move, uh, items 164, 2025, 165 of 2025, and 166 of 2025 to next week's agenda. Counsel, any objections? Hearing none. Items 164 of 2025, 165 of 2025, and 166 of 2025 are moved to next week's agenda. With all the items on the agenda being considered, we will now move on to the mayor's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, one thing I'd like to reiterate is, uh, come next week, when we go to, um, uh, vote on the SAFER grant, I will be asking people's commitment on going forward with the data center so we can pay for it. So if we get the commitment that people are still behind that, you know, we will continue to, uh, go forward with the SAFER grant. Otherwise, we just simply won't be able to.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Major.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Uh, Major. Mr. Roman. Thank you, Mr. Roman. Mr. Horniac.
No report, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Horniac. Mrs. Pauloff.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, this week is, um, Fire Prevention Week and, um, we have an open house. I would like, I would like to get more information about the open house, um, from the fire chiefs if I could.
Thank you, Counsel Roman Pauloff. Uh, the open house is the sixth, um, or is it the eighth? Sixth. It's my, my dates are.
It's the eighth, I think.
It's the eighth, six to nine. There's so many dates running through my head. It's, uh, October eighth, six to nine PM at the fire station. We're gonna have all kinds of things there, uh, the antique fire truck, the new boat. Um, we're gonna have so many giveaways. We're gonna have, uh, carbon dioxide detectors, fire extinguishers, uh, kids turnout gear, uh, as we did, uh, last year, helmets, you name it, it'll be there. Kids are gonna have a blast. The bounce house is gonna be there. Um, it'll, it'll be a lot of fun. We had over three hundred and fifty people last year and I'd really like to see that double if I could. That's, that's a big ask, but I'd really like to see that. Uh, we did have a, um, grand kickoff at Baum and Ford Saturday, this last Saturday. Um, that was, uh, pretty poorly attended and maybe that's part of our fault for not getting it out there, but, um, they do a great job. Baum and Ford does a great job in supporting the fire department, uh, as well as Mr. Emblem. They are gonna sponsor the Great Escape. The Great Escape is where the kids set out to draw their house on a piece of paper and then they practice escaping out of their house with the, you know, two ways out of their house at all times. They know where their meeting place is. They practice not necessarily calling 911, but know what to say when they call 911. Um, the winners of the classes that turn in the most Great Escapes back to, uh, their teachers, that school receives five hundred dollars. And, uh, Coey School has won that for a lot of years, a lot of years. Um, so, uh, we look forward to seeing all that stuff come back in and, and it would be great to see everybody there.
Thank you. I, I do know that, um, there are a lot of children that get excited about everything that happens with the fire department and that's great to see because education is power for them and it really does give you a sense of community with the fire department getting involved so much with children and that learning, um, fire safety and stuff like that. So thank you very much for that.
Absolutely. It's our pleasure.
That's, that's the end of my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff. Mr. Salander.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, nothing from my senior community or anything there. I just have a few questions. Um, since we're being threatened, I guess, on a vote, when is our town hall?
Mr. Major.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Mr. Salander. Um, so we are actively in negotiations right now with, uh, the end user through, uh, capacity on the economic development agreement. Um, the, they are still fully committed to a town hall meeting. Um, this is, right, you know, as of right now, there's not a lot of new information that hasn't been put out there, that we haven't put out already. So there's not a lot of new information other than, uh, what's been out, which is a lot. I mean, on the water, on the, uh, electrical usage and everything else. Um, so, um, we're, we're in constant discussions with them, but we are in negotiations right now for the economic development agreement. And, uh, um, from my perspective, I do want to make sure that we're not doing something that's going to jeopardize our negotiating position too with an end user. So, um, and realistically, you know, this is, uh, what, what could be the biggest economic development, uh, deal, uh, in a very long time here. So, um, that's, uh, it's, I want, I, from my perspective, I just want to make sure that we're not doing anything that's going to jeopardize, um, that. But they are fully, I, I do want to reiterate that they are fully committed to having a town hall meeting. So, um, you know, getting a date on the calendar is one thing, when it happens, um, it, I guess, uh, I, I want to ask the question back, I mean, what, what, what would, um, what would, what would everybody want to see? I mean, are we rush, I don't, like I said, I don't want to rush it, but that's, that's kind of part of the, you know, if we're in negotiations, I don't want to be in a situation that's gonna jeopardize our negotiating position.
I, I believe we have a commitment and a, and a, we should, responsibility to our citizens to have them be able to have as much accurate information from the developers as well as us ourselves being asked to make a decision based off of something where in the last year, the numbers and the information has changed and it's fluctuated around and a lot of the information that we're being given is speculation because of things being in negotiation. And so you're putting us on the spot with threats of raising taxes, of cutting services and, and all this over, when we don't even have the full information. So I think that's just wrong, um, to, to not only put us in that situation, but to, to fall short of that commitment that we made. What happened to, when we met before in the, the, uh, Capacity LLC, we're in here, we were concerned about having too short of a time, but we were able to, they were willing to have this meeting one week later and now we keep kicking that can down the road. It, it's, it's just unacceptable. Absolutely, one hundred percent unacceptable and it's disgusting.
My second question, no, I'm done. My second question is, when are we gonna be voting on the master plan that was done several months back?
Mr. President.
Mr. Mayor.
There's been no threats issued. All, only thing that's been issued is reality. A few, a few weeks ago, when we voted on the additional zoning package and prior to that, when we voted on the, uh, what, what do we call that, Joel, the, the purchase agreement? Um, we had unanimous support. We had unanimous support to go forward with this SAFER grant, uh, because you yourself, Mr. Salander, said I'm a hundred percent behind this project. You said it on that day.
I was, yeah, I was. I'm not, I'm not opposed to it, but I, but information is given here.
I'm not, I'm not done. You, you, you were a hundred percent behind it, so we went forward. We gave our best estimates on, uh, what we believe we could achieve. It's a big number and I didn't want to commit to something and, and then say, oh, uh, you didn't deliver the whole amount of, of that, uh, economic package. So, um, when the folks from Capacity were here and willing to do a town hall, the, the questions we were having were, that they didn't already answer, were the terms and the money amount in the, uh, economic package. We just don't simply have that worked out yet. And so if we had them come now, they could only answer the same questions that came up before. We, the, the things we need, the actual building design from the end user and the economic gain to the city and the schools. And we were, were working, um, very quickly and diligently on that to come up with the answer. I'd like to have it tomorrow. We won't have it tomorrow, but we are doing, we, we worked on it all day today. We worked on it a lot of days last week. Um, we also have to have the detailed load study, uh, complete so they're com- um, comfortable with going forward. We're, we're working on all those. The detailed load study is very close to complete. So until we have actual answers, we, to answer the numbers, the numbers are going to be big, way big enough to more than pay for what money comes from the SAFER grant and will even be able to, to get additional firefighters, uh, with, with the money that comes. But we want to, every time I tried to answer that economic gain to the city, uh, said, oh, those are just your opinions. Well, I, there, that's not, that's the only thing that's not acceptable, uh, for you to say that, um, it's not acceptable to wait till we got proper answers. I find that not acceptable. So next week, I hope we still see a commitment with people behind this project because we were told that, that you were and that's why we went forward.
You're twisting words, but that's.
Yeah, I'm not twisting words. You don't even have the floor, so I'd appreciate it.
I'm done.
Mr. President.
I just would like to know about when we're gonna be voting on the master plan.
Mr. President, if I may.
Mr. Major.
Uh, that's a question for the whole committee, so I want to make sure that everybody on the committee is on board with that. So that would be, you know, every, you know, all the people that were on it. Um, and, uh, you know, the next step would be to take it to the Planning Commission.
Do we know when that's gonna be going to that? I mean, it's been several months since we had all had our final meeting and everything was submitted.
Mm-hmm. Understood. So that's, that's a question for the rest of the committee and I'll be happy to send out an email and, and asking everybody.
Mr. President.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Nick Roman.
Uh, if, I just wanted to make sure counsel does understand that, that economic development package will be coming back to council to be voted on. And speaking with Mr. Major earlier, the plan is to have at least one, if not more, meetings on the data center ahead of that vote. So I just want to make sure counsel understands that that will come back to council to vote on and we will have those meetings before that.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Mr., the other Mr. Roman.
Well, the other, you know, I think with all the meetings we had, even at the zoning change meeting, as much as we talked about what we knew from what we talked with Capacity LLC, the reality is, if you didn't have the end user in the room, what good is that meeting? I mean, the reality is, I, I brought up the water requirements several times, no matter what I say, it gets construed as if it isn't true. So at some point, to me, unless you have the end user in the room, what good is that town hall meeting? So the reality is, they're not gonna tell us who the end user is until that load study is complete and they know the project can go forward. So that, a, a town hall meeting is, people who are there with legitimate questions, if they find out the end user isn't, it's, again, it's, it's like, you know, having a town hall meeting with a presidential candidate and the presidential candidate doesn't show up, his intern shows up. And then, you, you know, you can trust what the intern says or not, but you're probably not. There'd be no point in doing it unless you have the end user in the room. I, I think, you know what, as much as you can say the data center isn't related to the SAFER grant, here's the reality for council. Council has to decide, are you at least committed to coming up with the revenue to cover these nine firefighters? It doesn't have to be the data center, but you better be on your way to get something. If it's not the data center, you better start looking right like yesterday. Um, I, I think that's the bigger question of council. So for what it's worth, I, I think when we, we talked with Will Turner, they were very open to a town hall meeting, but the reality is, they weren't gonna release the end user until the load study was done. So you almost had to wait for that. They're close to getting that, that load study done. I think by the end of the year, you could easily have something in November, December. So, yeah, I just, we just want everyone to know that I'm glad Nick brought up that the economic development package, that is an ordinance. So there has to be hearings on that. I would expect at least a committee hall, if not a council and a committee meeting as a minimum outside of town hall meetings. So we, we need them, but without the end user, what's the point of it? That's my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. Mr. Salander, are you finished? Thank you, Mr. Salander. Uh, Mr. Drake.
Uh, nothing from my committee. Uh, I just got a few things. I ran into people at the, uh, stores, uh, sometimes get bombarded, so hopefully these, the biggest thing, and Steve pretty much, uh, hit the nail on the head. People want to know what's going on, how I'm gonna vote. I just tell people, I'm not gonna lie to you. I said it could be one building, it could be a million buildings. It, it's all the unknown. So hopefully these town hall meeting or meetings, numerous ones, I want to make sure that the public's well aware of them, whether you're for it or against it. That, that's their decision, whether they come and speak or reach out to the council people, that's fine. That's it on that. I'm not gonna beat a dead horse with that. I've, I've had questions from the people at South Shore about the, uh, equipment out there, where the kids swing and all that good stuff. And I did go out, take some videos. It is true, there's, as of last week, there was no water running. There's three different, uh, portals where you can push a button and water's supposed to come out and I don't even think it hisses, uh, so there's probably no pressure in it. That's one. Then the other thing is, I know a lot of the parks is high travel with softball throughout the nation. A lot of them have, uh, ADA facilities for kids' equipment, uh, for, uh, adults and youth with disabilities. So I don't know if that's something with all these SAFER grants we get for fire and hopefully police. Still don't hear a whole lot about, uh, anything for police. I don't know if, if anybody tries to get grants or how the grant thing, uh, comes about. So hopefully the police, like, and I brought it up numerous times and I'm normally true to my word, that the, uh, the police department is way out of date, as everybody who's ever been there knows. And then another thing I've had people ask, um, who's allowed to use a senior center? I know the seniors go there. I heard you yell it or say it. I know the seniors are there. I go there a lot. But aside from that, after hours, I have people wondering, groups, who's allowed to use it? Is it spelled out or is it this group because, ah, we agree with you, what, what you agree with or don't agree with or how is that determined?
Mr. Major.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I'll, I'll have to look into the exact language of their contract with the senior center, so, uh, but my, I believe that they have the use of the building other than the fire museum and the, um, office space for the Chamber of Commerce and the OEDF. There, the two offices are there. So it is a city-owned facility. We have an agreement with the senior center that they run that facility because they have their equipment there, they have storage there, they have a lot of things there. So for the most of the, being outside of the fire museum and the two offices, the senior center, and they have their own board that governs their, their organization.
Okay, they, they have a policy on how it's, it's written or you're not sure?
I, I, I don't know their policies. I'll have to check with them.
Okay. Um, let me see, one other thing. Does anybody know from the administration, um, is the water fixed yet at the South Shore Park?
Um, Mr. President, Mr. Drake, um, the last that I checked, I had a few days off last week, but, uh, the last I checked, uh, Mary, uh, Wolf and her crew at Water Distribution were going to schedule a time to come out and, and fix the, uh, the issue. There were, they had to order some parts for the water fountain, so I know we're getting close to the end of the season, so I don't know if they made the fix and, uh, winterized it yet or if they, if, if they haven't scheduled making the fix yet, so, uh, and again, another thing I can get back to you on.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. Uh, Mr. Drake, also on that, um, the water fountain out there, I talked with, uh, Mr. Borton. He said there was a part that was on backwater and it can't, uh, that was broken. It's, he, he said as soon as it came in, the, uh, water department was gonna come and, uh, pressurize it so they could, uh, find out exactly if that was the only leak that there was. So, um, I'm assuming, uh, as soon as that part comes in, they'll get it. So I'm assuming as soon as that part comes in, they'll get it taken care of.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Drake. I have nothing from my standing committee and I know, don't know if this has anything to do with council, but it does. I was at the Democratic meeting on Thursday night and I misspoke. I was under the assumption of when I read that the, the homes that were getting bought out that we purchased or that the, you know, that the OEDF purchased, that they were getting more money than what they are getting. So I, I talked with the mayor over this and they were, they are getting the appraised value, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, and 25% over that and then their, their moving expenses. Is that correct, Mr. Major?
Mr. President, yes, it is appraised value 25% and moving expenses. That is correct for the five houses on the northwest corner of Wynne and Corderoy.
Mr. President, there were, one other little item is based on if they had any, any money on their mortgage still. When they went to get a new mortgage, there's calculation that can, that can be done for balance left on their current mortgage, interest rate versus their new mortgage on their new house. So that, there were, I believe, two houses that ended up getting that and it was a relatively small amount, but I just want to make sure that we acknowledge that.
Thank you, Mr. Roman. I, like I said, I misspoke when I was at the meeting last week and I got called out on it, which, which, which was fine, but I wanted to make sure that we had it clear for the people that were at that meeting and I know a lot of them listen here. So in the kids' terms today, my bad. But with that being said.
Mr. President, could I add another thing?
Mr. Mayor?
And, and I, it is something to go back towards the data center. One thing that you have to bear in mind as a council person, understanding we have a, an industrial area, regardless to what is proposed there, you're going to have people that react to, negative to what will be proposed. One of the questions that, that I always raised, any, with any discussion about the data center was something that would benefit the schools and the city of a minimum each of $5 million a year or more. There was not one person that could come up with something that could be placed there that would have lesser impact than a data center would to the whole area. To this day, no one has come up with anything that could be placed there that, that would even come close to having less impact to the area. So if people, and, and I, I hear the comments on Facebook and I believe not many people take what comes on Facebook or social media to be very accurate because there is no rules there. And so a lot of things are put out, out there. Mr. Salander, you put a lot out there on it and you make a lot of comments on.
I'm sorry, do we need to call somebody out on this? I think that's unacceptable.
Mr. Mayor?
So just keep it to yourself and keep your own comments.
Right.
Thank you.
So it is, it is a, you called me out on it when you said it's things that were unacceptable. You make the comments, you don't have the floor.
Look, this isn't a back.
Here we go.
Finish it.
Let's, let's, let's stop here. I will, if there's no further business before council, I seek a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mrs. Pauloff.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Horniak. Counsel, any objections? This meeting is adjourned.